Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement? Yes.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 30th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to hear the -- to assist the hearing impaired. If you -- anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have the roll call, please? Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Fox?
Here.
And now we are moving on to the -- to the Pledge of Allegiance. I’d like to invite our guests this evening, Henry Basman and Bill Rapp, to come up and lead us in the pledge, if you would, please.
Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
Yes. A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orally meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion for -- to approve the minutes, regular enclosed-session minutes of January 18?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports, our first report is from our mayor. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Firstly, I am inviting high school juniors and seniors to apply for a scholarship opportunity offered by the New Jersey State League of Municipalities. They are offering three $1,000 scholarships through the Lewis Bay Second Future Municipal Leaders Scholarship Competition. The deadline to apply is March 11. More information is available on the city website at cityofsummit.org. And secondly, very briefly, to everyone who celebrates the Chinese Lunar New Year, Happy Year of the Tiger. Now, I would like to speak a bit about the problem of auto thefts in our city. This is a serious problem and requires serious efforts from law enforcement and residents. To be clear, this is a complex problem and very well organized on the part of the thieves. Stolen cars are either used immediately to commit additional crimes or are taken to the port and shipped overseas in containers. Most of the thieves who steal our vehicles are juveniles, and when arrested, they are almost automatically released because of the laws governing juvenile offenders. Those who are adults are often released very quickly due to the recent bail reform laws enacted by the Attorney General. Unfortunately, this encourages repeat offenses. And lastly, even if caught and conviction -- and convicted, the penalty is not harsh because it is property theft without physical harm to individuals. For the thieves, stealing motor vehicles is low-risk and high-profit. Consequently, it is more important for our police and residents to work together. Chief Sigorsky and his command team have taken several important steps in the last two weeks to combat this problem. They have increased targeted patrols in various neighborhoods. Just this weekend, unmarked cars were stationed in certain locations, and 80 extra hours of patrol coverage was added. Last night, a residential patrol interrupted an attempted motor vehicle theft on Witchridge Road. The Summit Police Department is interviewing technology companies to increase the city’s license plate reader capability at our perimeter as well as in police vehicles. They have also taken other serious steps, but I am not going to reveal their playbook for obvious reasons. Please believe me when I tell you that our police department and council and I are taking this very seriously. While Chief Sigorsky is, in fact, the acting chief, he has been with the Summit Police Department for over 30 years, and I have the utmost confidence in his investigative skills and operational strategies. I am very grateful for his hard work, attention to detail, and willingness to lead the SPD at this juncture. Last week, I met with the mayors and police chiefs of the Chatham’s, Westfield, New Providence, Milburn, and Springfield. It was very informative and productive, and we will meet again at the end of this month. The biggest takeaway was that every single one of these municipalities is experiencing the same problem, and nearly all stolen vehicles were unlocked with the key fobs in the vehicles. The chiefs shared their data and the actions they are taking in their towns. Chief Sigorsky has begun to implement some best practices from other towns. Clearly, increased communication is important, and to that end, we are mailing a postcard to every household in Summit, which will go out shortly. I posted a video last week on the city’s YouTube channel, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. With each stolen or attempted theft of a motor vehicle, we are continuing to send NICSIL alert and advisory messages. There are two types of messages. NICSIL alert messages are issued in an emergency, urgent must-know situations, like when there is a suspect on foot in a neighborhood and we need to apprehend them. When an alert -- and when an alert message is put out, people who have registered an email and a cellphone number with NICSIL will receive a text message alert as well as an email alert. An advisory message is intended for time-sensitive and non-time-sensitive, important neighborhood, community-level information. Advisory-type messages are issued for public safety, health, weather, traffic, and similar kinds of information. When an advisory message is put out, people who have registered an email address and a cellphone with NICSIL will receive only an email alert, as the advisory message defaults to the email address. If people want to receive a text message for advisory messages, they need to remove their email address from their NICSIL account. These are NICSIL’s specifications and not ours. We also regularly post messages to the SPD website at Summit Police Department, reminding residents of criminal activity. Westfield Mayor Shelley Brindle is organizing a group of mayors and police chiefs throughout our region to propose reforms to the recently enacted bail reform laws. Chief Sigorsky and I certainly will participate in these discussions. Finally, no matter how many actions the police take, and no matter how many police officers are patrolling our city, the bottom line is that residents must do their part by locking their vehicles and removing the keys. I know we live in a very safe and beautiful city, but we do live in a city, and we are close to several large cities. That’s one of the reasons we all chose to live here. Yes, law enforcement must shoulder the largest burden in dealing with auto theft, but public support is vital for combating such theft. If you see something, call 911 immediately to say something. Do not pursue them. Call 911. I am working closely with council and the Summit Police Department to ensure the voices of our neighbors are heard. I assure you that the comprehensive attack on motor vehicle thefts and other crimes in our community continues with the strength and purpose our residents expect and deserve. I implore you to work with me and lock your cars. Working together, I am confident we can stem the tide of auto thefts in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now moving on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator’s Report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Just two items. One’s a reminder, the Broad Street West Public Presentation is on Wednesday, February 9th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Summit Community Center on 100 Morris Avenue. The presentation will focus on the Broad Street West Sub-District 3 Development Project. Concept plans will be available for review with a 3D model of the plan’s structure and site overall, and an opportunity for questions from the public. If you cannot attend the meeting, it will be broadcast live on the city YouTube channel. And for about a week after the February 9th meeting, the city will be accepting questions and comments from the public who were unable to attend, or those who did attend, if you have any follow-up. Well, the city will put together an FAQ to respond to those questions and comments. Email messages can be sent to bsw@cityofsummit.org, and that will be on our website as well. And then just the last point is just more of a post-storm brief. Weekend storm that just occurred dumped an estimated nine inches of snow in Summit. The Division of Public Works deployed more than 25 trucks and other snow-removal equipment to clear over 80 miles of city streets. There was about 562 hours of overtime accrued at an approximate cost of about 30 -- roughly about $35,000. Snow guidelines and information on snow removal -- our snow removal ordinance is available on the city website, which is at cityofsummit.org. And that’s all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Rogers. And now on to the Council President’s Report. I just have two items. First of all, the Hometown Heroes Program is now accepting applications through March 31st. This will be the fifth year of this successful program that displays banners with the names, images, and dates of service of more than 250 active military and veterans on city streets, and that runs from mid-May through mid-August. Applicants must have lived in Summit at any time in the past or present, or are currently or have been employed by the City of Summit or the Summit Board of Education, or are current or former volunteers in the Summit EMS, Police Auxiliary, or Volunteer Fire Division. The program is funded through private donations with no fee to participate. Information on application requirements and how to apply is available at cityofsummit.org/hometownheroes. And secondly, a reminder that the Summit Free Market is now a year-round event on the second Saturday of each month at the Municipal Transfer Station at 40 New Providence Avenue. To volunteer or for more information, please email pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. And now we’ll move on to our presentation. This evening, we have with us Henry Basman, who is the commander of the American Legion Lindsay Street Post 322, and Bill Rapp, who is the past commander of the same American Legion post. And they will be doing a brief presentation on Four Chaplains Day, so I’d like you to come forward, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. It’s a pleasure to do this. Madam Mayor, President of the Council, Council members, all citizens. The Four Chaplains is an important story because it reemphasizes that people from different backgrounds, social status, religion, political viewpoints can be together, work together, and in this case, serve valiantly and sacrifice their lives for our country. This Thursday, February 3rd, will be the 70th anniversary of the sinking of the U.S. Army Transport Dorchester during World War II. February 3rd is now commemorated as Four Chaplains Day due to the heroic and selfless acts of four Army chaplains who were aboard Dorchester. Here’s the remarkable story of the Four Chaplains. The troop ship Dorchester departed South Tons, Newfoundland, for American bases in Greenland on January 23rd, 1943. Four chaplains were aboard the ship. Like so many people in World War II, they came together from different backgrounds and had become colleagues and friends during their training at Army Chaplain School. They were.
Methodist minister George L. Fox was born in Lewiston, Pennsylvania. When he was 17, he left school, joined the Army, and served in World War I in the Medical Corps. He was an assistant there, and he was awarded the Silver Star, Purple Heart, and the French Quatier. After the war, he attended Illinois Wesleyan University and the Boston University School of Theology, where he was ordained a Methodist minister. In 1942, Fox volunteered to serve as an Army chaplain. He began active duty on August 8th, 1942. Rabbi Alexander D. Goody was born in Brooklyn, New York, on May 10th, 1911. He was ordained by the Hebrew Union College and later received a PhD from Johns Hopkins University. He originally applied to become a Navy chaplain in January 1941, but he failed the physical. After the attack on Pearl Harbor, he applied to the Army and was accepted. Dutch Reformed Minister Reverend Clark V. Poling was born in Columbus, Ohio, the son of an evangelical minister who was rebaptized in 1936 as a Baptist minister. Poling studied at Yale University’s Divinity School and was ordained in the Reformed Church in America. With the outbreak in World War II, he applied to serve as an Army chaplain. Father John P. Washington was local to New Jersey. He was born in Newark, studied at Seton Hall, graduated with an AB degree. He entered Immaculate Conception Seminary in Darlington, New Jersey, and was ordained a priest in the Catholic Church. Shortly after the Pearl Harbor attack, he received his appointment as a chaplain in the United States Army. Shortly after midnight on February 3rd, the Dorchester was struck by three torpedoes from a German submarine. The torpedoes tore a hole in the starboard side of the ship from below the waterline to the top deck. All electricity was knocked out. The ship was without light or a public address system. Panic set in. Many were trapped below decks. Abandoned ship had to be passed from man to man. The four chaplains calmed the men, helped the wounded, handed out life vests, and directed men to lifeboats. When the chaplains ran out of life vests, they gave theirs to four other young men. One sailor, Petty Officer John J. Mahoney, tried to re-enter his cabin, but Rabbi Goody stopped him. Mahoney, concerned about the cold Arctic air, explained he had forgotten his gloves. “Never mind,” Goody responded. “I have two pairs.” The rabbi then gave the petty officer his own gloves. In retrospect, Mahoney realized that Rabbi Goody was not conveniently carrying two pairs of gloves, and that the rabbi had decided not to leave the Dorchester. As the ship began to sink, one witness, Private William B. Bednar, found himself floating in oil-smeared water surrounded by dead bodies and debris. “I could hear men crying, pleading, praying,” Bednar recalls. “I could also hear the chaplains preaching courage. Their voices were the only thing that kept me going.” As the Dorchester went under, the four chaplains were seen linked arm-in-arm praying. According to some reports, survivors could hear the prayers of the chaplains with English, Hebrew, and Latin being recited simultaneously. 672 of the 902 officers, enlisted men, merchant seamen, and civilian workers aboard died. Many of the survivors owe their lives to the courage and leadership exhibited by the four chaplains, who, in sacrificing their lives, created a unique legacy of brotherhood. The four chaplains were posthumously awarded the Distinguished Service Cross, the second-highest Army Award for Extraordinary Heroism, and the Purple Heart. There were many in Congress who wanted to bestow the Medal of Honor on the men but were prevented from doing so because the regulations require that the Medal of Honor recipients perform with valor under direct enemy fire. In 1960, Congress unanimously awarded a special gold medal to the families of the four chaplains in their memory. We need to understand that in the 1940s, our country was sharply divided along religious lines. Until the Dorchester, there was no mention in print of Catholics, Protestants, and Jews working together in a common cause, especially in prayer. It was transformational moment for Americans.
Today, the memorial to the deceased chaplains in Arlington National Cemetery is dedicated to the four chaplains and all chaplains who served. A few years ago, while visiting Arlington Cemetery, I walked over to where the newest graves were, most of which were for men and women who had died in Afghanistan and Iraq. Arlington’s a non-denominational cemetery. People are buried based upon what they have in common, having died in service of our country. On the row of the newest graves, I came upon these two. It’s hard to read what’s on them, but you can see that the gravestones were not aligned perfectly because they had just been buried and the ground was still settling. As I stood in front of these graves, two soldiers, one on the left, a Jew, the other on the right, a Muslim. I was moved by the realization that in many other countries, these two men would be mortal enemies. In America, they were brothers in arms who were laid to rest beside one another and who will be together forever. This example of what makes us one people, regardless of religious affiliation, is the most significant and long-lasting contribution of the four chaplains. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that lovely presentation, gentlemen. I look forward to this presentation every year, and I think it’s a really good reminder about how there are so many things that, you know, there are so many divisions in our society right now, and really what makes us -- what makes this country so great is that we’re all Americans, and we really all do need to work together and try to be one big community, and I, you know, and Summit as well. So thank you for this reminder. Does anyone have any questions or comments that they’d like to make?
I just want to thank you, Henry and Bill. It’s very moving. It really is, and I wish that so many of the divisions that we have in our country would trend -- be transcended by what we have in common and not what takes -- tears us apart. So thank you. Given me a lot to think about, and I truly appreciate your time and effort. It’s a beautiful presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
I just want to say, I’ve seen you walking around town, and I know that your friendship has been very longstanding, and you are a breath of fresh air, the two of you, Bill and Henry. So thank you for tonight, and it is a reminder that it’s not even just about division, but it’s the authenticity about really caring about people. Sorry, I hate this mask. Caring about people and just really appreciating that we are one, one people. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you again. So we’re now going to move on to public comments. So at this point in the meeting, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on any matter not on the agenda. And I would ask you to keep, once again, to keep the comments to three minutes. I’ll be using the egg timer here. And if you submit -- if you -- when you come up, please state your name and your address before you speak. So I’m going to open the comment period now. Would anyone like to come up?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Salzman. That’s S-A-L-Z-M-A-N. I live at 6 Essex Road. Before you start your egg timer, I just want to say that the Four Chaplains’ presentation was inspiring and moving. My family and I are always thankful for the heroic acts of military and service members. So thank you. I feel fortunate to have seen that tonight. Nine days from now, the public health emergency will expire. I’m concerned with getting life back to normal as fast as possible, once we are no longer under the confines of a public health emergency. Do you foresee decisions, once we are no -- do you foresee decisions returning to the local jurisdiction? If so, what is Summit’s plan for moving forward? I’ve come tonight because I am in favor of a mask-choice lifestyle in Summit, and I do not read or hear of any scientific reason why this should not be possible. As you all know, Summit is a highly vaccinated municipality, well above the 90th percentile for middle-school-aged children, up to 65 and older. Similar to the flu vaccine, the COVID vaccine -- the COVID vaccines don’t completely prevent contracting COVID, but they seem to be very effective at preventing serious illness, which brings up the question of why we are still living like it’s 2020. What more can we all do, other than treat it like any other contagious virus? If someone feels sick, stay home. When you feel better, rejoin society. This is what we’ve always done. There are plenty of infectious diseases floating around. Knowing how mild COVID or Omicron now actually is, people should individually make decisions for their own safety based on their own personal susceptibility or concerns. It also brings up the question of why we are still counting positive cases when hospitalization and death are down. All the mitigation efforts may have been necessary until we learned what COVID was and who was at risk. Now we do. We can still effectively protect the vulnerable by encouraging them to wear particulate-filtering masks without disrupting our entire society. It’s also been well-established that it’s time to think of our children’s education and mental health. Children are in crisis right now, and the suicide rate far outnumbers the COVID death count. Too often, children are dismissed as being too resilient. They’ll get over it. They’ll forget. Kids are tough. They’ll adapt. Why would we want our children to adapt to this? They are very impressionable and sensitive to their environments. It ultimately affects who they will become as adults. They spend far too much time in school for their emotional growth to be ignored, even during a pandemic, which we now confidently can say most likely will not kill them. Children are not small adults. It has been well-established that COVID-19 is not as virulent in children nor as Omicron as deadly, even in vaccinated adults. This should be carefully considered when taking drastic measures, such as masking all day. Our hands are not tied. It is up to us. Common sense is different for everyone, and decisions should reflect the needs, interests, and concerns of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Would you mind providing that comment to the clerk, please?
Oh. Excuse me, we are not -- Who do I hand it to? I’m sorry. Oh, I’m sorry.
The clerk. Yes, thank you. I’m going to ask members of the audience to please not applaud. That’s not the way we do things here at council meetings. That’s -- that was a totally different thing. Okay. Now, if you have a comment, you’re welcome to come up. Does anyone else have a comment? Come on up.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Larry Wise. I live at 76 Fernwood Road, and I wanted to say, one, thank you, which is First City Mayor and the acting chief. I appreciate you guys communicating with us around the steps you’ve taken in the last couple of weeks. I actually just had two brief questions related to your comments. The first -- sorry, the man’s challenging. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, that’s better.
But the first is, you mentioned that crime is complex, and I think most residents here share that. So beyond the steps that you’re taking with the other mayors, are you engaging other levels of government? That’s the first question, and what’s their reaction, to the extent they have one? And the second question is, what are your metrics for success? You’ve mentioned that it’s happening broadly across other jurisdictions, so curious how you’re looking at that, both relative to them and then in absolute terms. Thank you.
I thank you. I’ve made notes, and when everyone’s finished their public comments, I’m happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Yeah, I should have said that, that we’re going to take all the public comments, and then we’ll address them all at the end. So if anyone else has a comment, please come up and state your name and address. This is all messed up now.
Hi, my name is Irene Loeschert, and I live in Summit.
Hi, my name is Irene Loshert, and I live in Summit. I'm not sure how we get answers to questions, I guess, that we have. I was here last week. And I just wanted to state that I think that there is a double standard with Councilman Little being able to participate in this meeting via Zoom, while I know that she does go out socially in places like this and wears a mask. But our residents are not allowed to participate in this meeting via Zoom. When I was here at the meeting last week, people wrote in, maybe five people wrote in letters, and their letters were summarized in one sentence from all five people. I don't think that that's fair. I think that if you've written a letter, if you've taken the time, then it should be read with your words and that that is not a way to be able to participate. Again, I state that I think that residents should be able to participate via Zoom. And if they're not allowed to participate via Zoom, then other people shouldn't be allowed to participate via Zoom.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Please, no applause. And does anyone else have any comments?
Hey, how you doing? So nice to see you. Susan Hairston, good to see you again.
Excuse me. All comments have to come through the council president. You don't address individual council members.
Sorry about that. Apologies.
Please state your name and address.
Erwin Miller.
Thank you.
5 Knob Hill Drive.
Thank you.
So, I know I only have three minutes, so I won't read this entire letter. This is from the ranking member of the Select Subcommittee on the Coronavirus Crisis, Steve Scalise. He just issued this to the CDC Director, Rochelle Walensky, on January 31st, yesterday. I won't read the entire letter. I'm just going to start at the section where he highlights masking young children against scientific evidence. Current CDC guidance states that children over the age of two, whether vaccinated or not, should wear masks in school and other indoor settings. The extent of the protection masks provide, particularly in schools, remains unknown, and it might be very small. The CDC continues to rely on and cite flawed study from Arizona, which the CDC published in its Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report to defend masking in children in schools. This study did not control for days students actually spent in the classroom, improved ventilation, vaccination status, or other mitigation measures. Instead, the schools without mask mandates were in session for more days during the data collection than those who had mask mandates, nearly doubling the in-person time for students in schools without mask mandates. The Arizona study data does not paint an accurate picture of mask effectiveness for children in schools. Further, other studies relied upon by the CDC do not show that masks, on their own, provide any additional protection for children. Several experts note it's entirely possible that open windows or increased ventilation accounts for nearly all the mitigation benefit in a classroom, and other layered intervention may contribute only a marginal benefit or none at all. We have evidence of significant problems with requiring young children to wear masks all day. Practically speaking, children who need glasses have difficulty seeing when the mask fogs their lens. Masks cause severe acne and other skin problems, and they can be a distraction for children trying to learn. Trying to learn. More importantly, studies show that reading lips is a crucial part of language development for children starting around eight months of age, even more so for bilingual children. Studies show four- to six-year-old bilingual children lip-read more when they are confronted with speech in an unfamiliar language. Masking these children in school where they may be learning in their secondary language creates additional barriers to learning.
Mr. Miller, I'm going to ask you, you're three minutes away. I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Sure thing. Further, reading faces is critical for social-emotional learning. Facial expressions are integral to human connection and social learning, particularly for young children who are just starting to learn how to signal fear, confusion, happiness, or other emotions. Covering a child's face mutes these nonverbal forms of communication and can result in robotic or emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. According to Dr. Lucy.
Mr. Miller, please, I asked you to wrap up.
I am wrapping up.
Doesn't appear that way. Please finish.
Sure thing. According to Dr. Lucy McBride, a well-respected DC physician, children need to see faces to develop emotionally and socially at those ages. Yet it appears the CDC has failed to consider the adverse consequences when masking young children. Worldwide, countries have foregone mask mandates in schools due to the adverse consequences for children. For instance, the European Center for Disease Prevention and Control recommends against primary school children wearing masks. The World Health Organization says no one under age six should wear a mask. Many of America's peer nations around the world, including the UK, Ireland, all Scandinavia, France, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, have exempted children with varying age cutoffs from wearing masks in classrooms with no evidence of an uptick in school outbreaks in those countries relative to schools in the US. I hope Summit follows some leads here, because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the public? Okay. Just a last chance, I'm going to close the comment period. Okay. So, we will now go through and try to address those. Would you like to?
Sure.
Start with. You'll start with Mr. Wise's question.
Mr. Wise, how are you? So, I can tell you that, working with other levels of government, obviously, local municipalities, and I mentioned in my opening remarks where Shelley Brindle, Mayor Brindle from Westfield, is having mayors talk about our concerns about the bail reform and why, where areas in which we think the reform can be reformed. We will be passing that up to our legislative leaders. I have, I am in contact frequently with our local representatives in the Assembly and the Senate. And I have been in touch with our Congressman, Tom Malinowski, and asked him to look at some of the issues in the judicial system that are causing problems, are tying the hands of our police officers in some situations. And I understand the reason for bail reform. I don't have a problem with bail reform, but there are ways that it can be tinkered with. It's, you know, every law that's passed, sometimes you end up having to make adjustments. Another thing I didn't mention, but of course, we know, is that the, you no longer, police officers no longer can pursue vehicles of just a stolen car. And it's just with the thief in the car and the stolen car because studies have shown, and we had our own experience here in Summit, that many more people were being either police officers or the person in the stolen vehicle or innocent bystanders were being severely harmed by motor vehicle accidents. We have an officer that just returned to duty having been pursuing a stolen vehicle on April 21st, 2020. He just returned to active duty last week having had seven operations and two, almost two years of physical therapy. So, that's a rule that we just can't, we can block a car into a driveway if officers see that it's being stolen. But once it goes onto one of the major highways in pursuit, and I could be, maybe they can't even pursue them on local roads. I'm not 100% certain about that. But we cannot do that. But as far as bail reform, that's something that we are talking with the other mayors in the region and not just the seven towns that I mentioned. Just to give some, let the legislators know what we're finding, what's, how this is having an impact on our community. So, yes, I am reaching out to other levels of government. As for the metrics of success, well, I would tell you, for me, the metric of success is no more stolen vehicles. But that's obviously simplistic. And I don't know what those metrics are, quite frankly. I can look into that and ask Acting Chief, if he wants to come up and answer that. I would appreciate that. And if we don't have an answer this evening, we can certainly get back to you if you'll give your email to the city clerk. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, just quickly, the metrics that we're looking at, obviously, is to reduce the numbers of stolen motor vehicles, not just the stolen motor vehicles, but reduce the number of attempted stolen motor vehicles, reduce the number of incidents where people are going on residents' private property. I mean, that's, you know, simplistic, but that's where we're at.
Right.
I'd like to get that number for the stolen motor vehicles down to where it was for that 10-year period, where we would like annually only get about nine to 10 stolen motor vehicles from like 2010 through 2018, 19.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hairston?
Yes, Council President, if I may ask the chief to speak to, this is confidential information. You can certainly tell me. But I understand that there are task force at the county level, the state level, and the federal level for these car rings. It's almost like organized crime. And this is something that has escalated. And I don't know if there's anything you could share about that.
As, I'm sorry, as to what?
How is that factoring in with what's happening locally? Is that there are task force that are also advising? Or are they? That this is a connection? There's not these kids who are stealing cars just to steal cars? They are connected to something that is a larger issue?
From our level, from the intelligence that we've been receiving, the ones that are stealing the cars, they may be less organized, may not be connected, in a sense, to the actual shipping of cars overseas. They're involved in this right now because it's very easy, it's profitable for them. Our intelligence shows that when they do steal the vehicle, they go to a middle person called a plug in Newark that'll take the vehicle off their hands for a certain amount of money. And then that plug is one that facilitates the vehicles and deals with, like, the organized crime element. But the ones that are stealing the vehicles, per se, they're on the low rung on the ladder, the ones that we're dealing with here.
So, I asked you to share that information because I think as a metric of success, if we could have an investigation that is shutting down the pipeline that is making this possible, that is another way of, because this is not, this is something that happened many years ago.
Right.
And so, increasing it for federal.
From our level, what we have done on municipal level, dealing with other towns, when they make arrests and they get a hold of the person's cellphone, they get a digital search warrant for the cellphone. But then that information is passed on up the chain to the state level, to the federal level. And we can initiate it by making the arrest and, you know, seizing the phone and then getting the warrant for the information. And then that information, obviously, we don't have jurisdiction in that. We have to pass that up the ladder.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
I had a question, yeah. Sorry, I had a question, Chief. I sent you that email regarding the video of people co-opting the signal from the key fob to the car. Can you address that? And if we're finding that kind of behavior here as far as the stolen vehicles?
No, not at all. Not at all in New Jersey either. The vehicle, I mean, the video that you sent me, that I believe that was out of Canada. And I know they've been experiencing, you know, similar problems like that in Canada and Europe. But there's no evidence that they're using any kind of high-tech equipment here. Pretty much, this is the high-tech equipment. They push the start button.
Right. It's just as simple as a key fob in the car with an unlocked door.
If that ever does change, if we have any evidence or intelligence that that is being done, we'll alert the public for that and there's measures you could take to prevent that. But right now, it's not even being considered. It's not, it would have no evidence of it.
Right, okay.
Any other, Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. Actually, Councilman Sullivan Flynn, that was a great question, which made me think, first of all, I just want to say, I have the full confidence in you guys, in our police department, in you. I think you're a great chief. I think I, for 12 years, I have felt very protected in our community. So, I just want to say that. And I am honored to be on the Safety Committee with Chairwoman Little. Councilwoman Little. So, I want to say that. I think what I'm hearing from the community, too, is that there's an unsettling that this is happening. But added to that, what are the possibilities of it going to, you know, to other crime? That's what I'm hearing. And I think, understanding the technology is not here today, but if it were here, how do we communicate that? How do we combat that? So, that's what I just feel like I'm hearing from the community is, how do we make sure that we keep each other safe? You know, we've done a great job in terms of communicating, but taking that a step further and making sure we're looking down the road to the possibilities.
And I'm more than happy to answer that. If I seem like I rushed it off, I don't want that to be, you know, to be the oppression that you get. The only reason I do just glaze over it is because we have a specific thing that's happening right now, and I don't want people to. I've heard comments out there like, well, why bother to take my key fob? If they want that car, they're going to get it anyway. And they'll refer to things like using that type of technology. And that's really not the case. Still, these cars are just about impossible to steal. You need the key fob to do it. Even with that technology that you're talking about, the high-tech technology, it doesn't work on all cars. Manufacturers are starting to take measures against that type of technology where they're coming up with key fobs coming up with key fobs that work on motion, if there's no motion for a while, they stop sending out a signal so you can't intercept it. But just to reassure the public, if that ever does happen, if we have any evidence that it is happening, we will alert the public and, you know, tell you what measures to take. And it's pretty easy as far as keeping your key fob in a certain enclosure. You could disconnect to take the battery out, there's all different measures. They sell, like in your video that you sent to me, sleeve that you keep the key fob in. You know, I don't want to be talking about that too much because that's not where we're at, and I want, really want the focus to be on where, leaving the key fobs in the vehicle and securing the vehicle. And to your question, the concern of these crimes escalating, in talking to a lot of the residents after the meeting two weeks ago, through email, meeting them on the street in a diner, I'm taking a phone call with them, that is a concern. One of the questions were, are these people dangerous? Well, the ones that we're dealing with right now, you know, they haven't given any indication that they would resort to violence. Now, that doesn't mean that they're confronted or cornered in some way that they would resort to violence, but right now, they're not confrontational. Some of the comments that I got, there was concern that, okay, if we listen to everything that you're saying and we take the key fobs out of our car, we lock our car, you know, we take that option away from them, will they upscale to more dangerous crimes? Will they carjack me? Will they rob me? Now, that's a possibility, sure, but by experience, that's unlikely, because the people that are committing this crime, and there's a lot of them doing it for the reasons the mayor had said, it's very easy and it's profitable, it's very low risk. Once you start climbing the ladder into more serious crimes, that risk is going to go up. Right now, you know, the penalty for getting arrested for a stolen car, it's a fourth-degree crime, I believe, but you're looking at three to five years incarceration. You'll, no one's gonna get three to five years for a stolen car. But when you take it up to, you go up the ladder, more serious crimes like carjacking or robbery, now you're looking at prison time, real prison time. You're talking about 10 to 30 years for a carjacking, where you have to do like eight of those years before you're eligible for parole. For a first-degree robbery, you're talking about 10 to 20 years. You're talking about serious, serious crime. Could it happen? Yes. Is it likely? No. If we take this, you know, if we make it harder for them to commit the crime, if we aggressively, you know, try to prevent it and make arrests, they'll go somewhere else. But again, is it possible? Yes, but very unlikely in my experience.
Counsel President, may I just ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
Kind of a statement or a question. I think as a parent too, one of the things we think about is our kids. And so, in thinking about a communication plan, just how do we best arm them with information also? So as we start thinking, like, I have a driver, a young driver, so you'd kind of mentioned other crimes and what could happen. I think just being able to feel like as a parent, as part of a larger communication plan, how do we make sure that our young drivers are also, and the walkers too, you know, staying safe? So just kind of in your, back your head to keep that in mind.
You want to answer?
Yeah, if you'd like.
I don't have anything, you know, to give you just off the top of my head, but you know, that's something that we could talk about, and it's something that, you know, we are considering, sure.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the Chief while he's up here? All right, thank you, Chief, that was very helpful.
Thank you, Chief.
So now, we're gonna move on. We have a couple of other comments. We have some mask policy comments. At this point, it's really speculative to say that in nine days, that the state of emergency is going to be lifted and we're then, it's going to be free-for-all. I have a feeling, you know, that it's entirely likely that in nine days, there will be a renewal of the state of emergency. Mr. Jacoby, can you, do you have any more intel on what's likely to happen?
I don't have any intel yet. I think that, just so people understand, when the governor issues an executive order, it's a law. And governing bodies such as this, school districts, have to follow the law. In fact, in the executive orders, if you look at them, it's usually towards the end, there's a clause that says elected officials, municipalities, school boards, et cetera, can't take any action to interfere with the law, or it's a crime punishable by imprisonment and $1,000 fine. So the governor, and I can tell you, in, when this first pandemic first started back in 2020, one of my clients, a county executive, took some action, more aggressive than what the governor wanted, and the governor let him know that, you don't take the action, I make the, I make the decisions on public health emergencies. So it's really up to the governor. The governor does have the power. In New Jersey, the governor's a very powerful position, probably the most powerful governorship in the nation. And that stems from his ability to issue executive orders. So we have to wait and see, but this governing body has to comply with it. I know people feel differently about it, but we don't, we don't make the laws, we have to follow them, and we're, sir, there's not a question and answer. And we're obligated to follow them. So my advice to all of you and our various departments is, we have to follow the mask mandate. In schools, there's specific ones, in daycare centers, there's specific mask mandates. We don't oversee that. Schools got a separate board, superintendent, et cetera, that oversees that. But, you know, people have issues, the individual to address it is your state legislatures and ultimately the governor.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. And then we had one comment from Ms. Lowshird. I just want to explain that we have a longstanding policy that council members are able to participate remotely. Back in the day, 10 years ago, there were council members who, you know, who participated by phone, which was pretty awful, actually. Zoom's a lot better than that. But we're not able to offer a Zoom option to the public at this point because you see the amount of technology when we set it up with one person, but trying to do that with a community does not work. We are working on getting new technology that hopefully will allow us to do better at that, but there is also, as we've said, we've explained this many, many times in, you know, in the past year, that there is still an issue with legally, and Mr. Jacoby has talked about this, that there is an issue legally, that if we have a meeting and we offer a Zoom option and there's a failure of technology, then actions that we take can be invalidated. And at the end of the day, this is a business meeting. We are here, we take public comment, we're happy to have the public come in and to hear about what you're concerned about and to address those concerns, but at the end of the day, we have business to conduct. And if we can't conduct that business because of failed technology, that is a problem for us. So until the legislature gives us some protection from that, we are really sort of stuck. So, you know, we are, you know, you may, if you're not able to come into a meeting and you're not able to send an email, then I would say the best thing to do is to send an email to a council member, to call a council member, or the mayor, to ask for a meeting. We're all available to meet, to talk to you on the phone, to email with you. We make ourselves very available, and I would, you know, the council meeting is not the only place to get a concern or a question answered. So I hope that addresses your concern.
I guess I'm surprised.
You know, this is not a back and forth, we've, you've had your comment.
I'm sorry.
We don't, we, council rules do not allow for a back and forth. You've had your public comment period, we're responding now, okay? All right, I think.
I just want to add one thing and clarify another thing. One, I neglected to say in my opening remarks, something that I learned this afternoon, which is that the New Jersey Department of Transportation has finally approved the drawings for the change at the end of Fernwood to act, to make it much more difficult to access 24. So now, all we need to do is, and Mr. Schreger will be taking care of that immediately, obviously, we need to submit our final plans and pay the fees for the permit. So that's in the works. And I also wasn't sure because I wasn't as, I didn't, I want to clarify, I do think, quite honestly, that the bail reform measures as a whole are a step in the right direction for many, many people in this country. However, there are flaws, and I, along with the Chief, will be deeply involved with Mayor Brindle and her group to address our legislators, to let them know, these are the areas where you think, we think you overstepped the mark, and you need to address these problems. So if anyone thinks that I am just all in favor of bail reform as a blanket check, that is not accurate. I think there are flaws, and I think they need to be addressed. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so with that, if no other council member has a comment, I'm gonna, I close the comment period. So we're moving on. Yep, okay. So, oh, did you have, we, oh, you're returning equipment, that's good. Thank you. All right, so with that, we're now moving on to resolutions. So we have a few finance resolutions. Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 9432. This resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget from a council with a surplus to those with insufficient funds. This is a common occurrence at the beginning and end of a budget year, and the total amount of this transfer is $25,112. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay, so, do we have any comments on this resolution from the council? Comments from the public? Okay, so Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, moving on to Finance Number Two. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Number 9433, and this resolution authorizes emergency temporary appropriations in the temporary municipal operating budget. The temporary budget is in place until the 2022 municipal operating budget is finalized, and this resolution adds $101,200, making the total temporary budget $11,318,523. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
Yeah, sure, actually, I'm.
Come on up.
Wondering, you know, in a state of public emergency, how it is we're gonna spend an extra $100,000?
This is, this is money that's not, for this one, there, it's an emergency temporary appropriation, which is, it's kind of a misnomer in a way, because what we're doing is, until we pass the budget, this is, you know, there's a period of time where there's a temporary budget, and I think perhaps the best thing to do is have our CFO come up and explain this to us. If you'd like to step away so she can.
Sure, sorry.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Council President, through you. What we do in municipal government, we're governed by certain laws and things that we have to do, so you set up a temporary budget. When you initially set that up at your organization meeting in the beginning of the year, you can only set that up at 26 and 1/4% of the prior year's budget. So we're operating on a quarter of the budget that we had. What happens sometimes is, you have expenses that are heavy at the beginning of the year, renewal of maintenance agreements and contracts and things, so we have to add money to that temporary budget until we pass the regular municipal budget is adopted. It cannot go beyond what that budget will be, so we're very careful and very prudent about how much money we add to the temporary budget. They call it an emergency, it's just what it's called, it's not really an emergency. That's what the state has us call it. I hope that answers the question.
My impression was emergencies were emergencies, but I guess maybe they're not.
That's the terminology the state uses.
Term of art, it's the statute language, that's what it is, sir.
Okay.
It's just the statute.
So it's possible an emergency, it's not an emergency, it's just whatever.
It's not an emergency, it's a part of it.
Just this is how we do business because.
It's the statutory language that comes from the state. We don't choose that. It's not how we've decided, defined it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. So are there any other comments on that topic? Okay, hearing none. Could we have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little? Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance Number Three. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 9431. This resolution authorizes the issuance of special emergency notes in the amount of $680,000. As a reminder, in the 2020, in 2020, the state of New Jersey allowed for the creation of a special emergency to offset the significant loss of revenue as a direct result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The city of Summit availed itself of this opportunity for the parking authority. This special emergency and subsequent issuance of emergency notes was in the amount of $850,000, with the first of five installments of $170,000 due to be paid in 2022. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. This one's just a regular vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we're moving on to Law and Labor. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I'm bringing forth Resolution Number 9424 for the certification of compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidance on the Consideration of Arrest and Conviction Records in Employment Decision under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. This resolution requires that the governing body of each municipality and county to certify that their local units' hiring practices comply with the U.S. EEOC's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in the employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Before submitting its approved annual budget to the Division of New Jersey of Community Affairs, each of the council members receives the, receives the Act and all of the considerations, and we are required to sign that our local municipality is complying with this regulation, and that has happened. And so I move for Resolution Number 9424 to be approved.
And I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We now have a whole bunch of Capitol Projects and Community Services resolutions. Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to start with cap number one, please?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9423, to appoint a construction official, building code subcode official, and transfer all staff appointments. Based on our closed session discussion, we are promoting Ralph Meritado to construction official and building subcode official. Mr. Meritado has the knowledge base, the experience, and the qualifications to be successful in this role for the city of Summit. Mr. Meritado has come through a rigorous interview process, and we are confident in his ability to lead, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Meritado. We look forward to seeing you in this new role. Count, would you like to do?
Sure.
Cap Number Two, Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9419. This is to authorize professional services agreement in excess of $17,500 for the Broad Street West redevelopment planning and real estate advisory services Phase Six, not to exceed $65,000. This is to authorize the execution of a professional services agreement with Topology for planning and real estate advisory services related to the Broad Street West redevelopment project. This agreement is for Phase Six of the project, and these expenses will be reimbursed monthly by the redevelopers as the project progresses via the escrow account, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Capitol Projects Number Three. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Yes, this is ID Number 9285, to authorize contract execution for the marketing and transportation of recycling materials from March 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2023. This resolution is to execute a contract with the Giordano Company for the marketing and transportation of recycling materials from the transfer station. Giordano currently handles this task for the city, and they have been a very reliable partner. In the recent past, the recycling market provided revenue to the city. However, the last few years has seen a reversal of that trend, and unfortunately, the pricing continues to be depressed. I ask that we move this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to Capitol Projects Number Four.
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9400, just to authorize the execution of grant agreement between the city of Summit and the state of New Jersey by and for the Department of Environmental Protection, Grant Identifier UCF 2021 Summit-00026-RP. Last June, council approved the submission of this grant application, and we were recently awarded a maximum amount of $50,000. This New Jersey state grant and a 25% in-kind contribution from the city will allow us to update the city's tree inventory. The city's forester will then be able to make more informed decisions about our trees and make smarter assessments, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
I have a question, I guess.
Yep.
Okay, come on up.
So the $50,000.
Wait till you get up to the microphone, so.
So the $50,000 that gets approved, is that for administrative stuff or for actually putting in trees?
This is.
It's taking true. I'm sorry, go ahead, Council President.
You can go ahead and answer it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through you, Council President.
Sure.
This is to take inventory of all of our trees. We haven't done it in 20 years, and so it allows us to see the condition of our trees, whether they're at risk for storms, assess for disease or insects, as we had the Emerald or.
Ashbor.
Right.
Yeah.
So things like that, just to make sure that we have healthy trees in our town and.
And is it trees like along?
City property.
Is every curve considered city property in our neighborhoods kind of thing? Or is it just city property in downtown Summit?
No, it's street, any street trees.
All streets, okay.
Yep.
So the $50,000 is for the assessment of the health of the trees?
Inventory, yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Sure, I have a question, thank you, Congress.
Is there an RFP that goes out for this, or how do we determine who gets to do this?
It's a grant, and it's our, it's our city, we have a city forester, and they're gonna be using some of that money, I believe, to purchase equipment that will allow them, you know, like a, some kind of, I believe they're gonna have, I'm trying to think of the word for it, there's some software that's gonna allow them to keep track of the trees, correct?
Oh, right, yes, yes.
So there's software purchases and.
Got to purchase.
And, and I'm not sure what else, perhaps, Mr. Schreger, do you have an answer on that one? I can't remember what the.
No, the, so the grant will be used to pay for the foresters' time to complete the inventory. The forester himself, every year annually, would go out for an RFP, and then we select the best candidate for the position, and then also to buy hardware and software to do the inventory, since 20 years ago was just kind of pencil and paper in a folder, so this will be a link to our GIS, and will be a more current and adequate survey.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schreger. All right, any other questions on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to Capitol Projects Number Five. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9434, to authorize submission of Tree City USA recertification application and annual accomplishment report. Summit has been the proud recipient of the Tree City USA designation for 26 years. We take great pride in our trees and the beauty they provide to our community. The Tree City USA designation recognizes communities that have proven their commitment to an effective, ongoing community forestry program. There is no cost to the city for the Tree City USA designation, and the benefit of having this certification is for potential preference status for financial assistance, as is given to Tree City USA communities when allowance of grant monies are made for trees or urban forestry programs. I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second?
Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and that's, these are the kinds of change orders we like, right, Councilmember O'Sullivan?
This is exactly right. Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9395, to authorize a change order, number one, and final, Edgar Street Improvement Project by Sefeli and Son General Contracting Incorporated for $17,155.03 coming the city's way. So, the contractor, Sefeli and Son, has finished all of the work to the city's satisfaction, and change order, number one and final, adjust the contract based on the actual quantities used during their work. Thanks goes to our engineering division for carefully verifying the material used. This change order decreases the contract by $17,155.03, or almost a 10% of the original contract, a significant savings. And I happily move this resolution.
Can I do the opposite, second?
Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and now, we're on to capital projects, number seven, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9437. This is to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services for a part-time secretary, too. Per our closed-session discussion, we are declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services for a part-time secretary. Matt Hutseftis has tendered his resignation and is moving to greener pastures. He was a model employee who was always very eager to learn and very proactive beyond his position. He has contributed greatly to his department by being supremely organized and putting new systems in place. He's leaving us with no loose ends and a template for the next person to occupy his chair, so that there is a smooth transition. And I ask that we move this resolution.
Councilmember Little? I think she's frozen. Okay, so, you know what, I'm going to second it for you, okay? Looks like she'll have to pop back in. All right, so, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? I did the seconding for you, Beth. So, did you have any comments? Okay, so, hearing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one last capital projects, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9447, to declare a vacancy in the Department of Community Services, Uniform Construction Code Division, for a building inspector. Because of our first capital projects resolution tonight, which was the promotion of Ralph Meritado, we need to declare a vacancy for a building inspector. We discussed this earlier in the closed session, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second?
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Come on up.
Does that mean that there's not going to be a building inspector available because Ralph has taken on the higher role and the other position is empty? Or will he still be able to fulfill the role of the inspector? Because I know that the department was short, and that sometimes the city was having a hard time, you know, getting to all the inspections and stuff like that.
Well, we're filling a vacancy here. So, what we're doing is, since Ralph Meritado has moved up, there's a vacancy, and there have been interviews, and someone will be hired once this is completed. But there are other building inspectors, and perhaps Mr. Schreger would like to address the staffing issue, or lack of issue.
Yes, through you, Council President.
Of course.
The, there are two building inspectors. We still have Tony Doyle, who will fill in somewhat, but Ralph will also have to wear a little bit of two hats till we get that position filled there. So, there should be no, you know, disruption in service, so everything should be, it's fine.
Thank you. Okay, so, are there any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, we're now moving on to the consent agenda. And usually, we take this as a whole unless there's anything specific that anyone wants to comment or question. So, hearing no comments or questions, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and now, on to council members' comments and new business. Does, do any members of council have anything that they'd like to say? Councilmember Allen?
I would just like to say Happy Chinese New Year also. So, the mayor mentioned it earlier, I just wanted to reiterate it.
Yep, absolutely. And I'd also like to commend all the city staff for the hard work that they did in this past, you know, in this storm this past weekend. It's, I know these, responding to these storms, particularly on weekends, is a challenge. And you guys did a great job, and thank you for all your hard work. Councilmember Harrison?
Council President, today begins Black History Month.
To your right.
And I am hoping and expecting that the Summit High School Black Student Union will be able to do a presentation, so we look forward to that at the next meeting.
It's on the calendar, so I'm hoping that the, we're all systems go on that one. We look forward to having them with us next meeting. Thank you for arranging it. Any other comments or questions? Comments from council members? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Don't all jump at once, guys.
Second.
Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night, everyone, have a good, have a good evening, stay safe.